It's 7:02, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order and ask that we start off with the Pledge of Legalese.
The United States of America, to the public, we should dance, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All members of the Board of Selectmen are here in present and first turn to the approval of the meeting minutes of October 17th, 2024. Selectman Muska.
Two, um, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Oh gee.
I'll make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of Thursday, October 17th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second. Sorry about that.
May I be seconded? Sarah.
Okay, um, on page two, um, at the bottom there, um, number four about, um, Courtney Severino's comments. Um, it just says they were not depicted accurately. I feel that they should actually be printed as to what the corrections were, so her comments are accurate. Cause it doesn't correct the previous meeting where she, where they were inaccurately, um, publicized. Um, so I feel that they should be, this should be changed to what her comments actually were. Um, I can recite that if you'd like me to, or I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
Salvo, do you have them?
Uh, no.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I'll recite what I said the last meeting, so they can be correctly stated. Um, she said how she was not paid for her hours worked. Um, and that there, in order to work at the polls, you have to have a change in employment status to become a sound employee. Um, and she was expressing when and how she was informed of this change. Um, so I feel that her comments should accurately be, um, printed. Thank you.
Okay. Other corrections?
I have one.
Um, I'll, I'll get to you in a second. Anything else?
I'm good. Thank you.
Marie? Go ahead.
I'm on the page, lost my page, the, um.
Page seven, items thirteen, adjournment.
Right, so I was.
Selectman Yagel was left out of the motion and First Deputy Selectman Bissouda has been mentioned twice. I'm sorry, I have no idea what you said or what he said.
Mentioned twice.
Yes.
Yeah.
Item thirteen, under adjournment. I have fourteen under adjournment.
Yep.
During the meeting, Muska, Baker, second, favor. Oh yeah.
Sorry, I missed that one, please.
Okay, um. On the minutes as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, public participation, one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. First, allow anybody in the room to make comments that they'd like and then turn to the folks with us online and provide them the same. Anybody here wish to address the Board? Is there anybody online who would like to address the Board of Selectmen?
Hi, it's Noreen Farmer, 247 Southwater Street.
Good evening.
I just wanted to mention that for the first time ever, I worked the polls this year. I had the opportunity to work several of the early voting days and then I worked on Election Day, um, doing early voting. Opening up all those thousands of envelopes that had to get opened and, um, I just want to commend everybody who spent the day working, volunteering, or even volunteering to get paid for their time. Um, I had never seen it in person and I specifically want to, um, thank Denise Minard, Carol Muska, and Mark Simmons for the work they put in. It was a daunting process. They handled it exceptionally well, under a lot of pressure. And they really deserve our appreciation and thanks for the amount of work they put in to that whole process.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll have additional opportunity for public comments in a little bit. So, this is kind of a, uh, coming soon item. Amy O'Toole, Melissa Labelle and I have been working on this since, say, March. Um, but this is a, a copy of the, uh, digital budget book.
It's a little digital.
Yeah, I know, and here's an irony of that. The digital copy's not quite ready yet. Um, quite ironic. I know, it, it, there is irony there. Um, but this is, what this is designed to do is kind of do a, a deeper dive into, um, each of the departments. Um, their budgets, where their expenditures are. Um, and it's the second piece of the transparency software that we use, the ClearGov software. Um, so it's, I wanted to share with you that this was coming, it is, should be done for the next meeting. Um, it has been a lot of work that has been done kind of in between bunches of other stuff. Um, but it's another way that the general public will be able to see where their tax dollars are, are coming from and going to. Um, so once we have the actual digital format, I'll, I'll throw it up on the screen so everybody can see it, but it'll be listed on the town website, right under the transparency, budget transparency, radio button on the left. Um, and while it's been a lot of, a lot of work this year, it should be a lot easier next year because it's just updating what's there at this, at this point. Um, and making changes as necessary, but it's not creating something from, from scratch, so. Just for your light reading pleasure, whenever you get a chance to skim through 170 pages. All right, we have resignations, reappointments, and new appointments. We only have two reappointments, both of the American Heritage River Commission. I think we did.
Let's take them together and make a motion to reappoint Joanne Drapeau and Mark Weldon for the American Heritage River Commission, regular terms expiring November 1st, 2028.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Done.
Um, okay, coming up, we have our annual town meeting, which we have to do, um, before the end of the calendar year. Um, what I'd like to do is target December, whatever that Thursday is, the 19th, I think, um, as that date. Typically, what we've done is we've done it between Christmas and New Year's, um, but we, the goal would be to schedule it for the same night as our second December annual meeting. Um, second December regular. And that's where we'll adopt the annual report. That is where we'll, uh, make a number of somewhat pro forma resolutions that allow the, the lights to stay on. Accepting certain state grants, um, but we're also gonna be talking about a, a item that we're not yet at, which is the town's capital plan. Um, that'll be an agenda item for that meeting as well. Since that's already a scheduled selectmen's night, I'm assuming that doesn't interfere with anybody. Uh, but we may have to move that if the actual annual report isn't ready in time to notice it to have that meeting, so we're kind of working backwards here. Um, with that being the target date. Uh, I'm trying to avoid something between Christmas and New Year's. We can help it, but New Year's passed, that hasn't happened.
Was that the 19th?
It's whatever that Thursday is. I think it's, I think it's the 19th, yeah.
Are you looking to have it actually printed and prepared to take?
Yeah. Um, so we have changed how we do the annual report, but what's that?
Stop talking and get more.
No, it's much easier now, so a number of years ago, three, three years ago maybe, we switched over to using CCM's, uh, print shop. And they get those things turned around in like, two, three days. I mean, that used to be weeks.
Weeks.
It's not that anymore. They, they turn it around and get it here very quickly.
Good.
Okay. So, speaking of budget stuff, um, in order to get department heads and agencies sufficient time to put their budget recommendations together and to meet the calendar, uh, for the Board of Finance meeting, um, I, I brought the draft, well, it was really last year's draft of the budget letter for our consideration this year. This has got to be approved by us and by the Board of Finance. And I wanted to get this to the Board of Finance by their meeting in November, which is the day before our next one, which is why it's on our agenda tonight.
Do you want a motion for this date?
Oh yes, please, thank you. Just a motion, a motion to set the date would be great.
I moved to set December 19th, 2024 as the annual town meeting date.
Second.
Seven thirty, right?
Yep. Is there a second?
I'll second it with a motion to change the tentative date, just in case it's not ready.
Yeah, we'll, we'll know. That's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, back to the budget letter. This is last year's draft and I made some slight modifications. Um, but if there's anything else that anybody would like to have put in, taken out, reworded, this is your chance. Yeah.
I would like to take that, not to exceed the 2%. I don't think it's realistic to put 2% there with what we know that's been happening with the cost of living and the uncertainties going forward. Uh, I think everybody knows you do the bare bones in life in East Windsor. But to get people all worked up and irritated trying to get a 2%, not to exceed it, I think it's unfair. A lot of departments are doing things shorthandedly and doing without to meet that 2% criteria.
So you want to strike the last sentence in the first paragraph?
I just want to strike that last, yes.
Is that good with everybody?
I kind of think that there should be parameters to stay within. Um, I mean, 2% might not be realistic. Um, but I don't think like, that might say, oh, we need this, we need that, and I, I don't know, I think that there should be.
Well, I think if you read the first paragraph again, where I see that it's kind of, it just says departments are instructed to limit their requests to contractual operation increases only. I think that's suffice. Do you take something you need and go out and buy it yourself because you need it, because you got to stick to 2%, I just don't think that's right. This object, you have to. It would, it's like.
Gentlemen?
I mean, I think that the, both points are good. I think the issue is the department heads have to come in and, and make their presentation. So if they come in and they're too high, then we're gonna say, what are you doing? And then where are you gonna cut? Or what do you recommend to cut? Cut it maybe unfair. You don't give them a target, but on the other hand, to say, limited at the number, and maybe they legitimately need a greater amount, is also telling them not to ask for budget increase that, that the department needs, so. I mean, I, I think whatever language is gonna make sure that the department heads are gonna be prepared adequately to defend their budget and to address it, I think is important. Um, but to have it open-ended completely might give them the impression that, you know, the, the, um, the friction from previous years are now lifted and they can, so, um. But I mean, Jason, you could communicate to them, if we didn't put it directly in the letter, I mean, if you communicated to them that the expectation is gonna be that if they have an increase, that's significant, they need to justify it, or we're gonna be asking questions about where they can cut it. And if we didn't put that in there, I'd be okay with that, as long as they, they're not on the spot and they're, we don't put them in a corner when they come in.
Well, I agree that they should have a target to aim for, so why don't we just put, they should try not to exceed 2%. But if they need to, they need to, and then they can justify it, but at least they have some kind of target to look at.
Ladies?
You know how I feel.
I agree with Alan's wording.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, but can I have a, a motion to accept the budget guidelines letter as amended?
To accept the budget, um, letter as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Calabrese, we have an 824 referral. Would you like to explain what's going on? Wherever you're comfortable.
I just received a question about parcel located on Rice Road. Where it works off. It's town parcel, he was looking to purchase the parcel. Parcel is 1.3 acres of water. The building's a lot, the building's a lot, um, and the town has no plans, pretty, there are easements on the property. Um, it was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 824 referral, and on October 22nd, they made a positive referral. Uh, the ask is approve the sale or bidding, putting it up.
Yeah, I think the next thing would be to get an appraisal. And then we would bid it after that. Okay. Important part is the statutory requirement of going through PCC has happened and they have approved. Okay, so, um, we have the referral. What do you guys want to do?
I could ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, um, and I'm trying to, this is a little map of the thing. Which is the parcel, the one in the green, the one in the blue? And is that like a, a wetlands overlay? What's the checkered thing that's behind it?
Upland review.
Upland review? And what's the white area to the, that is, to, to the right of?
Non-wetlands land.
Oh yeah, if it doesn't have the mark. So the green is wet. Uh, wetland soils under Rice Road even, and the hatch mark is the 150 foot, uh, upland review area. That just triggers, uh, review by the commission or their agent, uh, if there's activity.
So where's the road? I can't, I can't really.
Oh, it's white and it's underneath.
You rub your finger on it?
Yeah, so the road is running right here.
Right.
And then there's like that triangle where Old Wells and Wells Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that doesn't connect any open space or anything? This, this is not part of contiguous open space?
There's agricultural, they use land next door to it.
Right.
But it's not, it's not our open space, the town.
Okay, cause I've always been, when, when these have come up before, you know, my, my, uh, sensors go off to say, are these, are these pieces of land contiguous to open space? And do you want to add it to the open space? But this is not one of those. So it's a donated lot that's a buildable lot?
Yeah, the town got it.
Tax sale.
Tax sale. Oh, okay. I think we should, um, sell it and let me, let somebody make use of it and, um, build on it if they want. We get a good price for, you know, get a, appraise value we're close, so. I'm good with that.
Well, remind me, like, so we will obviously ask for an appraisal and then we, we'll get some bids in there, but then that has to be accepted at town meeting, is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good. I think we should dispose of it.
I already asked my question before the meeting and you already addressed them, so, um, but for a disclaimer, because it is Rice Road, people know I live on Rice Road. Um, this is past stop sign, if you go down one quarter, all the way down the end of Rice Road at the stop sign, you take a left, there's that little side road. Um, with houses like in the middle by the tree, that's where it's located, so it's nowhere in there where I live. I live on the opposite side around the other street, so it's like always Rice Road. This is on itself, and I don't know the people I checked before, I'll open my mouth, so I'll just fill that disclaimer up there.
Sarah?
I'm good with moving forward with the appraisal and, uh, trying to sell it.
Okay, so we'll get an appraisal.
And Alan made a motion.
I don't know that that's really, I don't need a motion.
Well, when you can have one.
I don't think I, well, I'm sure, go ahead.
Or just go consensus.
Yeah, I mean, the, the appraisal isn't doing anything other than fact-finding.
Right.
So, once we have the facts, then we decide, you know, about the bid process, that comes to a vote. All right.
Move on.
All right, I have a memo from Amy about this next item. Uh, so this, you'll recall, we did something very similar to this with, uh, bringing up the financing for the high school track in, what was it, May, I guess? Um, we have to de-commit funds from one spot and move it to another spot. And what, what she's recommending is that we rename an existing CNR line, um, to represent what we're trying to do with getting a school construction question to the general public. We need to use the funds that are there, um, that are currently there for the roof engineering, to pay for the engineering around what a proposal would look like. Um, so the proposal is to take money out of the school construction engineering project, um, and, I'm sorry, to rename that. Um, the East Windsor School Construction Engineering, instead of East Windsor School Construction Engineering. Um, and then to move money from the, uh, high school roof engineering line into that newly renamed line. Um, so this is the same process that we did for the track, it's just putting the monies that we had set aside for a couple of related projects into one appropriate spot.
So this is from the, you said the CIF funds, or?
No, this is in CNR.
The one going into and the one going out?
It's all in, in capital non-recurring, it's just in different lines and capital non-recurring. So what we're trying to do is actually establish a project relative to what we're doing and to repurpose money that had previously been set aside for engineering of the roof replacements.
I, I know, I, I know this kind of came up, I'm not sure if it was at the CIP meeting, but there was a question, there was a question recently I heard at a meeting that asked the question, is, is it capital to do engineering? I think Alan had that question, you know, is it, can you, can you call it capital to pay for, in, for a, uh, preliminary engineering project?
Yes.
That can be capital?
Yeah. It's part of the pri, it's reimbursable, it's part of the project.
The roof money's not being used because the, the roofs are not being done because of the fact that the schools committee is looking, facilities committee, committee is looking at possible upgrades or replacements, that's what's happening?
The, the roof money isn't, the roofs aren't being done now because they would be done as part of a potential renovation. So they would still be done, it would just be done in a different lane, if you will.
That's, that's what I, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah, we're, the, they need to be done. Um, but what we're trying to do is do one, one question that voters will take all at once, uh, instead of doing it à la carte.
Then who's going to, um, utilize the funds? Who, who are the, who are the people that are gonna make the decisions about the, the use of the funds? Is that gonna be the schools facility committee? Is that gonna be, like, what, who's gonna be utilizing that to do what has to be done?
So it's in a town properties line, but it's being done in concert with, um, the school facilities subgroup that's there. Um, so as, and we, you'll recall, we contracted with CSG, or we have actually for a long time contracted with CSG, who's helping us through this process. That's where they would be paid from, and that's what they would be paid for.
I think if, um, I think like Jeffrey Ostra was here, he would say, um, what's going on with taking $200,000 and now doing engineering on a project that hasn't been, um, defined yet? So I, I'm assuming that if we move the money into the fund, we're not approving the use of those funds, we're saying, hey, we as a Board of Selectmen want to use those funds now. We're just parking it somewhere and then there'll be a decision made later for using it? Because some people that are, folks that are saying, oh, and I'm not necessarily one of them, but they're saying, oh, it's moving too quickly because, you know, decision to be made, this came up when we were talking about the $20,000 for the, uh, marketing also, so, um.
It's that same project.
Right, but now it's $200,000 for, um, for engineering, for the project, but the project hasn't been decided yet and defined. So I guess people, public will know, will want to know who's gonna decide how that engineering money gets spent, it's in, in proportion. Now, um, Sarah, you're part of, you're the liaison to that, um, facilities thing, you would know, you'd be, you'd be able to bring us back information, I guess, right?
Well, there hasn't, I haven't been, I haven't been any meeting.
August.
Okay.
So we're not, just to be clear, we're not spending $200,000 on this. We're moving monies into an appropriate line for this project. There is no project that is being engineered at this point. This is just lining up the funding in the project so that we can do the consultant work, the community outreach, the engineering, so that we can develop a ballot question.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I'm supportive of that, as long as we make it clear that to people, to the public, to know that we're not, we're not, the, the town isn't moving ahead with a specific engineering project.
That is true.
This is to have it available in the right line item when the time comes, but that the public will have ton of opportunity to have input into what the project will look like and, um, be able to, you know, in terms of whether it's gonna be renovation like new, or new buildings, or how many buildings, and the whole, the whole gamish of stuff. No decisions have been made, we're just parking the money to make it available.
Right, but there still needs to be engineering money spent to get to that point. So for example, um, one of the things Dr. Tudorin is intent on doing is, is providing to, um, the facility subcommittee and to his board what those options would look like, what those, what a rough estimate as to what the cost associated with those options would look like, which you can't get to without taking, taking a step forward on engineering. So we're gonna be spending engineering dollars on some things. Um, and this is making sure that we have the money in the appropriate spot to do that, so that a decision can be made by the community.
So.
I'm not, yeah.
And I just wanted to clarify on those points, so I envision to, you know, say we're going to decide whether we want to remodel or build new. We gotta do a little bit of engineering work to find out.
Yes.
You really don't want to remodel because of this, or you do because if you, you know, the build out is gonna cost this, like, that's gonna take an engineer to give us some of those technical aspects of that.
And then, once, once a pathway has been determined that we're gonna go to the voters about, you need to engineer that too. And you need to work with the, the Office of, uh, School Construction at DAS in terms of getting that approved and getting your reimbursement rate. And they need to have certain conditions met. This is all trying to move towards a goal of getting a vote to the general public, um, at, at an appropriate time, probably sometime early next fall. So things are gonna move really quickly, um, in January, February, March. And then the engineers have to have kind of some quiet time where they're actually putting together a fully flushed out final presentation. But, and, you know, we, we need to provide some options first.
Right. And the ask here is to recommend to the Board of Finance that they move this, right? Cause we're not moving.
Yep, we're gonna, uh, the recommendation is, is to rename the line and to move funding from the roof replacement line into the newly renamed, uh, school construction line. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions because I think this is the right thing to do, but I do have a comment. I think it's unfair for somebody on this board to stand somebody that's not in this room, how, or what he might or might not say. I think that's inappropriate and I don't want to be a part of that, and I apologize, um, for that. So if we have to do policies and procedures to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future, I would suggest that that be done, because that is wrong on a whole conscience, in my opinion.
Marie, I just want to say, I meant it as a compliment to Jeff, because he's been.
I don't care how you meant it, you had no right, you know, what's in somebody's mind.
Oh, I, I meant it as a compliment to Jeff because he's been actively involved and asking a lot of questions, and I pointed out his name because, because he's one, one of the people that is really asking a lot of good questions, and I figured if he was here, he would probably ask some really good questions. I kind of asked it for him.
But you don't know it.
I wasn't meaning to say anything negative about him, it was all positive.
All right, points taken, points taken on both sides. Any other questions about?
Um, since there hasn't been a, a facility subcommittee meeting since August, do you have any updates? Have you been meeting with Dr. Tudorin or anything as to the process so far, as like, because I, I'm adamant that the public is engaged before we decide that we are going one route. You know, as I said several meetings ago, is that to plan still, doing, okay, do you have any updates?
So I can tell you that Dr. Tudorin is incorporating feedback from his board and asking of CSG that they develop these different options. It started off with, uh, I don't remember if it was five or six. Um, I think that's down to three now, because we, one of the, the other things is, we don't want to be spending money on things that are just not gonna happen.
Right.
Um, so, uh, it, that's been kind of focused a bit based on the Board of Education's feedback. Um, and we had a meeting with, um, the gentleman who's gonna be doing the community outreach to try and figure out, like, how do, how do you get into the batter's box here? What's the first step? How do you start the process of moving forward? Even with that community outreach. Um, and when I say that things are gonna start happening, um, pretty, pretty visibly and pretty quickly after the first of the year, it's because the consultant has said, honestly, very rightly, that between now and the end of the year is dead time anyway. You know, I mean, you got two sets of holidays, it's just not gonna be, it's not a good time to try and engage the public.
True.
Um, so, those conversations start after the first of the year.
Okay.
And that's, that's the update that I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna ask for two motions. Um, one, if we could rename the school HVAC engineering line to the East Windsor School Construction Engineering. To, that, that's motion one. And motion two would be to move, um, $200,000, um, from the school roof engineering. I'm wrong. The first one is to create an East Windsor School Construction Engineering line. And then the second motion is to move $200,000. And then the second motion is to move $200,000 from um the roof, roof engineering line to the school construction line.
And these are just recommendations to the board of finance to do these two things, right? We're not doing that. Make a motion to recommend to the board of finance that they create a East Windsor School Construct, Construction Engineering Project. And the account named in Amy O'Toole's memo of November seven should be renamed as East Windsor School Construction Engineering. And also recommend to the board of finance that they um fund that new account with $200,000 from the roof engineering account listed in the memo.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Um, all right. Mr. Norton. We have roofs, contracts for roofs.
No. But he was licensed, the contractor, to explain it.
Good evening, Mr. Sauerhager. How are you?
Um, in front of you is a uh, the building committee, a recommendation to go with J H S's Roof Restoration Company who are on the state bid list and there have been contracts there. We reached out to several companies on the state bid list and they came in the most economical and with the complete job. Couple of them just didn't want to do this. The, the, the Robert Fire Department roof. They just wanted to do the D P W room because it was a lot easier and a lot flatter. So this was a complete, we went to go with one contractor. We're using the same material on both places, so. That's how we came to that conclusion and the building committee agreed with that. And we move this forward to you all. We have an agreement drafted up, which is our agreement we've been using with all our projects. And um I'm looking for a signature. So we can move forward, a metal roofing can be done. Actually, they prefer to do the metal roofing this time towards the winter versus doing it in the summer. A lot of these big companies certainly work on schools in the summertime and now is basically their downtime.
So timing is good. How long is construction start to finish?
Uh, start to finish should be approximately both projects, it'll be two months. Eight to 10 weeks, they're saying, but depending on the weather. I mean, if it snows, they're going to have to do a little shovel room before they start.
Questions or comments? Keith?
So I was at the, I was at the public building commission meeting and I, and I, I saw this. I'm not opposed to this, but I want to raise an issue that this brings up about the state, the state bid uh list and how we're approaching these very large bids. So um, as I understand it, the state bid list, uh, there's a state bid qualification list. It says we've qualified these contractors to do work because they're licensed, they have the capabilities, they have good uh, good uh credit. They've got good um recommendations and these are people that we approve to be on the list. And there are some things, there's a bidding list that has like pricing for things like uh road work, you know, so much per dollar. You know, you can charge such range for, for asphalt and such range for stuff. But when you have a big project that's, and this one is $686,000. And then we say, okay, we're just going to select a contractor off the bid list. We're not getting bidding on this project. We're getting qualifications. We're getting a bidder who's been qualified at the state list. But this project isn't on the, on the state bid list. Like this, this roof project isn't sitting there saying, hey, you know, the state has approved this, this amount of money. So we're kind of losing our, 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 our bids. We're not having three qualified bids come in for things that are over $20,000 just because we selected off of the state bid list. And again, so if the, if the bid list has like costs for things, okay, this uh, we're going to charge you chairs. You know, the state approves that any chairs like this are going to cost $35 or $65 and you can buy them from them. Therefore, you don't have to go out to bid because the state's already approved the good, a good price and recommends it. But, but this is like, we're getting, and I'm going to, I'm going to support this because I understand the necessity and how it happened. And I'm not saying there's anything improper happening except that bringing it to our attention that we're kind of not bidding projects just by going with the bid list. We're saying we're not going to bid things out. We're not going to compare bids and, and get the best price. We're just saying, hey, they're on the bid list, so we're going to use them. And it gives, it, it doesn't allow everybody to compete. Because we're not sending out a formal bid and we're just, now we're, now we're back to picking. And so I just, I just don't think that's the, personally, I don't think that's the best way to do it. People should be, people, businesses in the community should have, have the ability to see that we're posting a bid and they're going to bid on a project. And so um, I think we should have a, a, and we also have a bid, we have a charter that says you have to, you know, have bids. Or no, we have, it's not a charter, we have a policy, a policy. So I, I'm asking that the board considers um at some point addressing how we're addressing, how we're handling um uh using contractors off the bid list to make sure that where there should be competitive bidding, we're getting that. And then well, we don't need competitive bidding, we're not getting that. We currently don't have a policy and I'm, I'm, I'm worried that um, like this is a big, this is a big project and it wasn't like formally bid. So, so um, I'm, I'm just asking the board if we can address this sometime in, in the future, okay? But I'm going to support this because Joe, you gave a nice presentation the other night about the work that needs to be done and why it needs to be done on this timeframe and, and what's actually happening with it, so.
So when these contractors bid to the state, they also bid it as a square foot material and all of that. They have to use those prices, that pricing, and that pricing is lowest. It's like no different than how we buy dump trucks, how we, but there's a square foot price and they have to follow what they, it's not just like random, they, they qualified, so we use them. They all have to put in how much it's going to cost to do it by square foot, whether it's T P O, whether it's metal, whether it's rubber. So they, the pricing is there.
So I looked into that a little bit. I agree with you. That is, certain, certain, certain aspects of it are, are within the price list. But there's other aspects that are not because these are individualized projects and they get to bid out. They get to set bids based upon the, the other aspects of it, other than the materials, the difficulty of it, the engineering that has to go into it. And how, and the, and the amount of time and labor that goes into it. So I agree with you completely. Part of this includes um this particular bit, part of it includes the state um uh helping us get really good pricing, right? With that bid list. And, and we should talk about this and I think this would be a good discussion in the future about whether or not we're, we're appropriately um bidding out and allowing everybody to qual, to compete for bids. But um, it was just, it's a thought I have, but I, like I said, you did a really nice job the other day.
The upside to this contractor too, it's one town hall rather than the rest of them are all down towards the southern part of the state. So if you have a problem, they're next door and there's a
So.
Forty year roof warranty on the metal roof part of it.
Yeah. I, I didn't think it was bad bid.
No, 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 I, I understand what you're saying. I get it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I watched it, I did not attend, but I did watch it after the fact. Um, and so I got the presentation from Joe and so I'm pretty comfortable with it. But I, I would like a refresher on, on how that bid process works for sure. But I, and I did understand it to be what you described where, you know, it's a set, basically a set price that we, we don't have to go find this price. It's, it's already there. But I, I'm not opposed to getting a refresher on the whole process and seeing how that works. So, but yeah, I support it.
Ladies?
I agree with everything that's been said. I, I would like a refresher too on it, but I have no objections to this.
I'm not a contractor, so I have a couple of probably dumb questions, but I'm going to ask them anyways. Um, there's an exclusion listed in here um regarding asbestos removal and/or discovery. It's excluded from this proposal and it's only responsible.
Prior to us having Jamie, we did testing, entered the testing, a thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we tested the um Broadbrook Fire Department roof because that was the only roof they were concerned with.
That one I'm concerned with.
Yeah, and there was zero.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you for being prepared. Okay.
Um, can I have a motion to accept the bid from J H S? Um, or the submission from J H S Restoration Inc.? For the roof replacements on Public Works and Broadbrook Fire Department? And authorize my signature on the contracts?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
And if for some reason that cost gets inflated because of the market, you'll let us know ahead of time.
There's no cost, this is the price. How we brought.
But yes, we will let you know if that should change.
But yes, we will let you know there's change. Outside the track, I will pay, the tracks completed will be able to go on and it'll be everywhere stayed within budget.
Very nice. Um, all right, next is uh discuss and approve the capital improvement planning committee's recommendations.
Did we just do both of these together?
Yeah. You want to do them separately?
Well, did he say amount? Because it's two different amounts.
They're two different roofs.
Right.
Um, all right.
Did you read the motion back?
The, the amount wasn't mentioned.
Yeah, it was not.
I can include it when I write up a motion. I can include the separate for, for, for the two amounts if you.
Well, I think we should redo the motion.
Okay.
Okay, what would you like to move?
I would just like amended motion that's, we also, the uh East Windsor Fire Department will open the amount of 397, 795. The two projects.
So if you're going to enumerate the, the project in the dollar amount, you should do both. Wait here.
Um, and the first project is in the amount just 686,795.
Yeah.
I just want the public to know that it's two separate projects using the same contractor.
Is there a second to the amended motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Adam. How's C I P going?
Awesome.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Lawyer.
Yeah. Um, so during the, the, well, you guys will recall, we have some um projects that are teed up for Loser Funds for the um town meeting that's going to be two weeks from tonight. And um the projects, Loser has changed how they do things. It used to be that you would do a project that was qualified under the statute and then you submit for reimbursement and they reimburse you the funds. They changed that process, so now you don't need to go through the reimbursement process. They give you the money upfront, but it has to be used on projects that are included in your town's capital improvement plan. So I asked the capital improvement committee um to submit a total list of capital projects that they approved of as the town's capital plan. Absent funding. So the, the funding will come after the budget process and after they know how much they're going to get. And after they meet to apportion the available funds based on the projects that they want to fund. And after they make that recommendation to the board of selectmen, that all happens late spring, early summer. But what I want to do is have the total plan uh approved by our legislative body at our annual town meeting. And so that's what's on page two of the document. So if you're looking at the, the document, it's the two blue columns in the middle. The town department or the entity that's requesting it and the project name. Um, there is no funding to be uh, uh portioned to it yet because we don't know what the answer to that is. But I want to get this to the legislative body so that we can capitalize on Loser funds when they are, are available. So that we can capitalize on other grant opportunities that require us to have our approved C I P capital improvement plan on hand to draw from. Um, the capital improvement committee was gracious enough to accept that um request. So is there anything you want to fill in about the requests? Anything I, I missed from our conversations?
Uh, you're so good. Well, as I was pointing left inside and big, long there, this is the approved list. So we heard your message and we came back to you with that. So we got it exactly right.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. So if, if there's no discussion, a motion would be in order to accept the recommendation of the secret, the capital improvement committee for the town's capital improvement project list and forward it to town meeting.
What do you said?
Made and seconded? Al. I, I thought you were, I thought you had discussion. I'm sorry, were you just jumping in on the second?
No, I was going to make the motion, but she.
What are you lagging tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Batteries are.
I think she's on Zoom.
Good to go.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
I just had, I'm sorry.
Ladies first.
I just have a quick question. So the ARPO funds that we have available, they're going to be utilized first?
The ARPO funds are gone.
We already spent them on last year's.
Yeah, this is, this is a new list.
This is the new list.
Yeah, well, it, it's a, it's a new and old list. It's a comprehensive list, put it that way. Um, so now we'll have, and this is something that will go to the uh annual town meeting each year so that we're refreshing our capital list based on those projects that are, are, have popped up that we need to address or those projects that have been completed can come off. But we're going to accept the plan um each year annually. So we'll have a, a, a rolling plan year to year. The dollars will be assigned to it by us after uh the budget process concludes in, call it June.
Okay.
Keith?
I attended this meeting. They have a, they have a really good uh group there. People ask a lot of questions and they have a diverse group of opinions and, and uh Jason was there. So I, I thought, I think it was a good group and a good list. I, I like the longer list and the, and the complete list, the comprehensive list. Because then for me, uh, the money, I mean, projects, money can be moved between the projects without special appropriations because it's already on this list. If you narrow it too much, then we have to go through um supplemental or, or special appropriation in order to be able to, to get approval. And I think it gives it a lot of flexibility to have a, a longer comprehensive list. As long as it was thoughtfully crafted in the first place, which this was. So, so I, I, I like the list and I think um, anyway, you, you guys did a good job.
Other comments? Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, uh, opposed? Still caring? So that's not going to be in two weeks. This has to go to the board of finance too. So this is going to be at the annual town meeting December. Um, okay, Mr. Norton, this is your turn.
Okay, down at the end of industry, just before you get to the online. It's in the rear, 354. We have a, a drainage system that picks up small drainage in Rice Street and then you'll, and discharge it down behind the house. It's up there. End of the pulver, it's, it's washed away over time. A section of pipe has fallen off the end of the, the, the section. And the resident has called two times and said, hey, you're going to fix it. You know, so it's like, I'd like to get it done before winter. Um, it's 120,000. So I tried to get three prices. I, I was able to get two, both of whom had responded to our um contractor, you know, on call with back also. Um, I tried to get two others and one didn't respond and one wasn't interested. So I have two prices there. I mean, they're, they're very close. Obviously, one of them is less, so I'm probably going with that person with that component. Well, let's see if we couldn't get this done before. The smoke, it doesn't fly.
Can I answer a question?
Yep, I have one too. Go, go ahead.
Sure, um, so I see one of the um companies mentions cutting trees as needed, removing stumps, hollowing materials. But the other one doesn't mention that. Um, are there trees that we think need to be cut down there?
There are a few that will need to be cut. I mean, I, I, one just didn't become as detailed. I mean, there's a plan. They have to construct. There, there's a big outlet that has to go down there. There's a large uh stormwater basin that has to go down there, the dissipating the energy. We have to build a manhole and, and drop the pipe down, flatten it out. So whether or not they spell it out, they have to cut trees. One was a little more specific in his explanation, but the trees have to be cut. There's a plan that shows the area of construction. There was nobody coming back after the fact and telling me there's going to be a page of trees, trust me.
So the one that doesn't spell it out in the contract still would be doing that?
Would still have to cut trees.
For the dollar amount mentioned, it wouldn't be additional?
If there's trees that have to be cut, they have to cut them. They're, if they're in the way of what he's doing, he has to cut them. It's part of them. If there's trees that have to be cut, they have to cut them. They're, if they're in the way of what he's doing, he has to cut them. It's part of the project. I'm surprised they each got so quite frankly definitive in their, uh, in their descriptions. Usually you don't get on that.
Sorry, did you have other questions?
No, that's it for now. Thank you.
I have two questions. Um, it says if ledge is found, owner will be notified and additional hourly rates will apply. Um, do we know if there's a ledge underneath that or we won't know until they redig it up?
Yes, we're not, we're not really digging any deeper than what was done.
Okay.
To any great degree. And then out there, it's pretty, it's pretty sandy, pretty, pretty digging. I'm more concerned that they're going to be able to stabilize this. We're going to have some slopes. They're going to have to stabilize. They're both calling up that they're going to do that. You know, we're going to have to be on top of that to make sure.
And my, and my second question is, is in, in somewhat in lines of hers, uh, the last, on the roller cut construction, it says machines and labor hauling in three hundred yards to fill. That's the biggest expense is the three hundred yards of fill at twelve thousand dollars. I don't see any mention on the second proposal for eighteen five. This one is nineteen six, um, bringing any, any fill in.
Well, yeah.
I mean, that's a big expense.
There, there's, there's a plan.
Yeah, you're right.
They have to construct it to the plan. It's, they have to build it according to the plan and the plan has still coming in. There's some excavation taking place. There's some still coming in. It, it's part of the plan. It, it's.
But I don't know as if it's part of their estimate. That's my problem. I don't want them, if we chose to go with the second one. And I'm not saying we are or we aren't, but if we go with the second one and the estimate is this and they, and they come back and add another twelve thousand dollars plus because it's not specified here and they say, well, we didn't authorize, here's the, what we sent and this is what you guys approved.
All I can say is I used to work, I used to do this kind of work and you make your bid and you do the job. And if you miss something, you still do the job. That's the way it goes. That's like.
I'll say again, I'm not a construction person, so I'm just the layperson looking at it and say, are, you know, I wouldn't sign this contract if I was having something done in my yard and it didn't say they were going to include twelve thousand dollars on the cost already. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I get you.
Dylan?
I agree with Lenny. They're going to do the job. I'd take the guy with the eighteen. It's up to him. It's going to, he has to do the job as it's laid out. If he thinks he can get it done at that price, but we're powered on.
Hey, I, I wasn't going to, um, if we're picking, I, I think I would pick the first one only because I, to be honest, the second guy doesn't even, he doesn't list his, uh, contractor's license. The first one does. He doesn't list his substitute's license. He doesn't even have a phone number on there. I understand they put this together, but a professional business should be able to put together a, uh, a good estimate with that information on their, on their.
I understand.
Yeah.
Um, just, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Both of these individuals or both of these companies have done a number of projects in that. So we are familiar with, like, familiar with both of these gentlemen who prepared these and both of these companies. So I.
Which one do you recommend?
I'll do whatever you want.
What do you recommend between the two for this particular job? For this particular job, which one would you do?
They're both competent contractors. If one's going to come in and do it for less, I would go with them.
I, I would say that I did site visits with both of them. They're both competent. They both understand the, the work, whether it's in their quotes or not. The plans are the plans. They have to follow the plans. So there's no.
M D B typically comes in lower. Like, I think we just approved something with them, didn't we?
Yes, he did the water line at school.
Yeah, and they were a little bit.
Yes.
Okay.
And he did a couple other jobs.
He's not always.
What did Roller Cut do?
Roller Cut did, uh, well, M C P did Tromley Road for us. They did the water line. The Roller Cut did, uh, uh, Roller Cut did Wells Road where we put, where the drainage we cut.
That was a huge project.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're both competent. They, they both are competent people and, you know, it's, and, uh, quite frankly, M D B has also bid Wells Road and been hired. So depends on who shares their pencil for a particular day or whatever.
I guess I'm with Alan. If they're both, if they're, if they're equally competent, our duty, our responsibility is to go with the, the one that's going to save us some money.
Yeah.
So.
How do you determine what drainage projects your, your department is going to do or are going to do next? Like, is this the most important drainage project in town right now or?
This is important only because it's a repair. There's a problem and it's in someone's backyard.
But is it, is it a repair that we knew was coming or is this a failure?
No, this is, this is something that the gentleman that lives in the house called during the summer, maybe late summer, fall, whatever. And, uh, we went out, looked at it, hired the surveyor to go out. Who based mapping, I designed a plan to correct the problem. Um, part of the problem is the drainage just comes straight from, uh, Rice Street. Just one straight shot down and, and it discharges. The pipe is actually white speed where, where it comes out. And the water comes out with such a velocity currently that it undermined the pipe. There was never any real with all the protection put there or anything. This, this pipe has been there for probably, I don't know, fifty years, thirty years, whatever. So we're only fixed, if we don't address this, it's going to keep cutting that and more sections of pipe are going to keep falling off.
Okay. But it, it just, I suppose more generally speaking, do you have like a, a to-do list for drainage projects and, and you work off of? Is it you work off the one you can get done right now or you work off the top of the list and work your way down? How do you determine what, what drainage projects you're going to be doing next?
It is quite difficult actually because there are a lot of drainage issues in town. So we have a number of dollars to work with. And we have to work, we will take, you know, like if we're doing a road that requires drainage, like when I did Wells Road last year, that part of it, that we had to just fully reconstruct the road, put in drainage and, and what have you. So a lot of times it will go with our road projects. If we're doing a road project and we feel that we need to put some drainage in, then we design a plan and, and put it in. Some of them come from people like this. We have a lot of, of storm drainage systems that discharge in people's backyards. We go and check them on occasion, but I think we forgot about this one because we didn't know that there was a problem back there.
Is this bike draining Rice Street? This is that, that line that goes along Hitzman's End, right?
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, there's a series of them there. They call that right at Rice Street where it's not.
All right. So what do you want to do?
Yeah, one wants to make a motion, I think. I can see it looks knowing.
I would make a motion to accept, uh, the Director of Public Works' recommendation to use M D C Construction LLC um, for the Rice Street Drainage Repair Project.
Is there a second?
M D B.
He is in board.
N D B. That's what I said. No?
No. Uh, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Mr. Norton? That's a pavement management.
Okay, again. I would like to update our P K program. So I reached out to the, again, it's pretty much. And, uh, we, we have a couple of prices that would come in under twenty thousand dollar threshold, putting it out to bed. Um, our current plan was done by B H B out of Webber's Field. They don't want her, well, they sold off their base management, uh, division to John Turner Consulting. So as you can see, I have a proposal from them that includes, uh, uh, B H B working. I contacted, uh, Bayton Consulting Services, who does some work in South Windsor. Um, along with, uh, I think they get a little bit of an assist on T H P as well. Um, he's talking to them. I believe he's kind of a one man's they want the one man operation. And, uh, then there's B A G, which, uh, does many companies actually in our area for their pavement management. It's their kind of like B H B speaking. So basically, if you go down through the proposals, the uh, when it comes to Beta, I would go with their option A and having discussed it with the gentleman that brought me the proposal, that would be the way to go. It would be better um, for us and a little less expensive. Um, the Bayton Consulting proposal, on his proposal, I, I would not opt for the, uh, roadway video log. Which would bring his, uh, proposal total down to nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars, which is fifty dollars less than the Beta proposal. And my only concern of going with the fifty dollar or less one is that he is kind of a one man operation it seems and I think he's quite capable and competent to do it, but my concern would be if I, if I kind of need some, or are we able to actually do something. Where Bayton's a national company. They have plenty of people. They have a gentleman who's dedicated to our area with a full staff. That, that's just my recommendation. I, I think any one of them would be okay, but I think that the, if you work at fifty dollars, they'll be able probably get things done a little quicker.
Questions or comments?
I'm in.
Go ahead.
Well, Len, thank you for the, um, three proposals. Um, um, we have to accept something under twenty because it wasn't bid out. That's what you said earlier. But you have options here for us and, um, it looks like the third one isn't really an option because of the cost. It's older and we have to reconfigure it anyway. Um, so if the Beta is, um, is, they're going to get you the same as Baden, Baden, or however you call it. Actually, we go with the, with the solo guy to, because from up in Mass and the money would go more locally and they would have a, I'm, I'm always in favor of the, the smaller guy having a, having a shot at it rather than big corporations. But I hear what you said about, uh, the responsiveness, but my preference would be if they're equivalent to, to give the money to the, uh, to the smaller guy that's got to feed his family versus the big company that's, um, gobbling up all the business. If they're, if they're going to do the similar work, no. But I'm, I'm good with either one. Whatever the, the majority wants to do here, I'll, I'll agree with that.
Is, is this the same Beta Group that did the Parks, uh, master plan?
It, it's, it's the same company. It's obviously their payment management division that did it, but Beta, Beta has a number of divisions that, that do a number of things that I think they even have architects.
And what was our experience working with Beta?
I didn't work with it. I didn't have much to do with the Parker Plan. You could ask Joe or Melissa. Well, does he?
I was paid to work with.
Very good. Um, with their capability and the size of them, they have everything in-house, whether it's environmental science, whether it was soils testing. When we did the stuff with the park, they're all inclusive. So you're not going to different people and then you get a lot of the finger pointing, well, he did that design. I didn't do this design. So it's, and you know, they're, they're, you pick them up, email them, they're, they always call you back, which is huge.
Okay.
So there's an option A to use or an option B to use to go on? Or I just, they give us an option, A, image-based approach, which is nineteen thousand, two fifty, or option B, which is the lighter-based approach. One is a drive-by laser collecting data and the other one is actually looks, sounds like to me, and I'm not an expert, it sounds like it's a software package.
The actual, the, the one that I chose with the image-based approach, they are actually going to drive the roads. But quite honestly, they're going to use a software that I wanted to purchase during the last, um, budget. He wants to buy a lift.
Yeah.
They actually sort of partnered with them so that they'll run the road. They, they're going to pick up manuals. They're going to pick up street signs. They're going to pick up street limit signs. They're going to put down catch basins. And that's the proposal that, that I'm going with the actual drive and pick it up and then we'll get a report. We'll get the analytics and everything. Um, those two companies somehow kept crossing paths and they decided to be meant to work together. Um, hey, if, if I got the ten thousand dollars, they did the software, I wouldn't be sitting here now. I'd be doing it myself.
Yeah, but then we'd be paying ten thousand dollars a year forever instead of nineteen thousand dollars once every ten years.
Was ten thousand? I don't think it was an annual ten thousand dollars. I think it was a month. I, I don't remember what it was. Doesn't matter. We get. So anyhow, that's, that's kind of why I like that proposal, but like I say, I'm, I'm sure any of them will, will again, capable and competent of doing the job. I actually met the gentleman from Beta. I was comfortable with that.
Where'd you meet him?
Uh, he actually brought the proposal to my office.
Really?
Yes. They're in the area all the time. He's based out of, uh, for my life. But he's, he's here all the, he works Connecticut. He does Ramby. I think it's very a lot of, a lot of them.
So you have, uh, colleagues who have worked with them in this capacity? Do, do you know anybody who's worked with Baden?
South Windsor. I've once have just worked with them. Um, he didn't get into a lot of detail. I talked to the gentleman on the phone again. Sounds like a younger, he, he worked, actually, he started his career at B H B and then split off on his own doing the same thing he did there. So he seemed like a nice gentleman, uh, knew what he was talking about. He did say that he was a little busy now, so that I really need something right away kind of thing.
Yeah, that's alarming.
You know, you know what I mean? But there are times I may need, we, some funding may, may show up. And I may want to update something or take a look at something, what would it really cost to do this? And I, I, I don't know how quickly it back. Yeah, that's my only concern. Other than that, I I don't, doesn't matter.
What do you guys think?
I'm fine going with Beta since we had a good experience with them previously and they seem to be accessible and can complete the task in a timely manner.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion. We authorized first selecting to sign the contract with Beta Improving Communities together. Or pavement management services with the option A, the amount of, for the imaging, for, in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, um, tax refunds.
Move to a, a tax refunds totaling one thousand, five hundred, sixty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right. We're going to do selection reports. Um, first and foremost, uh, congratulations to all those who were elected on Tuesday. Now the work begins of putting the election season behind us and working for all of the people in the community or communities that, that you all serve. Um, I look forward to being a partner to all of our local legislators who, uh, were reelected and to those who ran but were not successful. And to those who ran but were not successful, thank you for being a part of the democratic process. Being a candidate for public office actually advances the public discourse and makes the whole community better and public officials better for having had them. On October twenty-third, um, I was pleased to attend the graduation ceremony with Chief Carl, um, for the town's new CERT team. This is a great group of volunteers who are now trained to assist first responders um, in events that require um, extra help from uh, from folks other than just police or fire. It's a great way of serving the community and I'm uh, pleased to share that Sarah Muska is on our CERT team. Um, and she's a leader among them. Thank you for that. Um, as you may have noticed by now, the sidewalk across uh, connecting Broadbrook School and Town Hall was painted a couple of weekends ago. Um, this was another project from the Arts and Culture Committee, um, and it brought some color and vibrance to the area. It engaged the community in creating it. And it has brought additional attention to the presence of the sidewalk, encouraging people to use it. Um, so we're continuing to make progress there, but it was a really fun way of bringing everybody together for a project that turned out looking really, really cool. Um, incidentally, both Chief Carl and Deputy Chief Murphy happened to swing by for the event, even though they both live quite far. Um, but that was a, a Saturday and it was great to have you guys there. Thank you very much. Um, on the twenty-eighth, um, which was that Monday, um, I got to start the day with breakfast with the East Windsor Middle School Student Council members. Um, they were newly elected to their roles and I shared some thoughts on the importance of leadership and service. And then I got to administer the oath of office to them. Um, and I actually used the one that's in the state statute for public officials. So they all, they all took the oath in front of their parents, which was really fun. Um, they, they're gonna do a great job and I really enjoyed the opportunity to visit with them and, and hear about their excitement. On the twenty-ninth, I met with the leadership at the Trolley Museum. They updated me on their operational and capital goals, shared some next steps for those and uh, we had a robust conversation around partnership opportunities. For anyone who hasn't visited the museum, you really should. Um, they do have a great vision and they have the right people in place that are helping to bring that uh, museum kind of to the next level. Um, on Saturday, the twenty-second, dozens of volunteers were on hand to collect and sort food donations for the Five Corner Cupboards Annual Food Drive. This is a tremendous undertaking that would not be possible without the many, many hands who show up to help that day. Um, my son and I were there to lend a hand, which is an annual event for us because he thoroughly enjoys doing it. And at five years old and forty-three pounds, on a pound-for-pound basis, that kid works probably the hardest there. Um, so we had such a good job, a good time, actually. We went back yesterday, just the two of us, and continued to, to move things along for them. Um, and that was at his insistence that I pick him up from school a little bit early so we could go down and do that. Um, I'm sure he was in part just looking to get out of school a little early. Um, this Saturday is the annual Veterans Day Road Race. Registration is now open and late registrations uh, will start on Saturday beginning at eight. There will be a brief Veterans Day ceremony at nine fifteen and the race starts at ten. If you're in the area, there's gonna be road closure, so be, be aware of that. Um, this is a great opportunity to celebrate Veterans Day, but it also is the major fundraiser uh, for the year for the Veterans Commission. Um, so we hope to see a lot of people there. Finally, on November sixteenth, the town emergency services will be conducting a live active shooter training exercise at East Windsor Middle School. Um, this is an interdisciplinary activity involving local police, local fire, and local ambulance. If you should notice increased activity on that day, it is related to the drill. Um, so please don't be alarmed and also please avoid the campus for the day so the first responders can practice what they would be doing. And they don't need, they don't need a ton of spectators. They need to be focused on the mission at hand. Um, and that's all I have. Marie?
Yeah, um, just wanna report from previous meeting when I wasn't able to report on Police Department. Um, a lot of it has been covered already. Um, they had uh, two recruits continue with the New Britain Police Academy currently. Um, they hired a new dispatcher. Um, and they're continuing the promotional process for Deputy Sergeant, Lieutenant and Sergeant in the coming weeks. And I believe the deadline for that is November eighth.
The exam is tomorrow.
The exam is tomorrow. Thank you. Um, so that's going forward. Um, they had two new hires that started. Um, and if my memory serves me well, um, I believe they both have previous training. Um, so that certainly will save us um, us there. So um, I hope they work out for us. Um, we've all been brought up to date on the radio system, our last meeting, so I don't have to do that. Um, they drone program, you guys were all aware on that and the transfer that, um, they have noted that there's um, been a lot of complaints regarding people speeding around town. Um, as most of us have realized that not only in this town, but in most towns. And then there were accidents in town, so I encouraged the public to take heed and start slowing down a little bit. Um, C I P was addressed tonight, um, and you saw new packages that they're requesting, uh, three new cruisers. Um, as we all know from previously, cruisers are hard to get, um, because of uh, the market that's out there. So, um, the CERT team, I think you related, you related to the CERT team, um, has graduated and they're moving forward. Um, and there's a lot of good people on that one. I didn't realize you were on it. So, kudos to you.
Thank you.
Um, and that's about it on to that. Um, I do wanna say that um, I didn't realize you were going to be the one that was swearing in the students at the middle school until my granddaughter called me and said, Jason Sworson. I said, okay. Um, oh.
It was a lot of.
It was an excitement, yeah. Um, those kids, kids work hard for what they do. Um, elections, I wanna, I know Norine already said she wanted to say thank you. Um, but I don't think we give enough credit to the people outside that. We give credit to the workers at the polls, but we don't give credit to the town employees that have to put up with us overtaking their spaces, inconveniencing them, um, taking over their lunchrooms and that type of thing. So I just wanna say for all of those, um, town employees that deal with us, um, very much appreciated. Um, our two new registers, um, did a good job, um, doing what needed to be done. Um, I wouldn't give any of us an A plus, um, but I certainly would say we completed the process without error. Um, although some minor things needed to be corrected by individuals that night. Um, but overall, I give ourselves an A. Um, our job that was done on Election Day. Um, and to the volunteers, myself, my daughter, just because we're on boards and commissions, we weren't able, um, to work unless we volunteered. We had no problem assisting with both registers that were a little nervous because they haven't done an election like this before. Um, and each one of us, um, my daughter has put in twenty-two hours in one day, in one morning. We started at five fifteen in the morning on Election Day and we completed at two or five, we got home. Um, I have a total of volunteer thirty hours. So for those people that are concerned about what I do for the town, um, I volunteered um, over the last four days, thirty hours to the selection process, which I would do again to help both all of the registers that are there. Um, and again, you know, to all of those that took the time to come out and vote, uh, we all had concerns about the election process and whether or not there were gonna be any issues. Um, there was two people out of
Six thousand?
Six thousand, um, that were upset and they were upset over nothing. One was upset because they thought that the tent that was out in the parking lot was not set properly. And he says it's seventy-five feet beyond the door. Um, they can set up however they like to set up as long as they're not interfering with the traffic flow. She, um, she was adamant it was five hundred and so I'm not gonna debate it with you. Um, sorry you feel that way. Do what you have to do. So, um, and just one person was angry because he had to wait five minutes for his ballot to be brought to his car because we had a lot of things going on and only one person that's a moderator could handle that. So, um, I apologized for him and he calmed down. He seemed to be fine. So, um, so it was a good day overall. Um, a lot of new people have stepped forward. Um, years passed. It's always been, oh, no, we don't have enough people to work the polls. We had more than enough people to work the poll. So it was nice and a lot of new people, um, that are looking to assist moving forward. So I think that concern about having enough people, um, has been, for the moment anyways, um, taken care of. Um, and again, I missed you, um, but I did see gentleman at the end of the table, um, at the uh, food drive. So, um, I folded bags. Folded a lot of bags. I didn't realize they recycled those bags to put stuff in going. So I walked in and person that was doing the bag, your turn. I said, okay, fine by me because I couldn't lift. So I folded way too many bags. But they got a lot of food in. So that's a good thing. That's the important thing. The rest is just what it is. That's all I got.
Thank you. Chief?
Well, I was at the food drive with Marie and Jason. It's, they have, they take about eighteen thousand pounds of food from the collections, from all the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and then they bring it in. In about three hours, they, they have to sort eighteen thousand pounds of food into crates. And then the crates go back to the uh, to the food pantry. So it's a big operation. They need a lot of volunteers. Um, if the call goes out and you hear it, just show up because everybody's very friendly and uh, they need the help. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work in a very short period of time. I already made some mention tonight about my attendance at the um, C I P meeting and the Public Building Commission meeting. The last thing is, I know we got this letter from the town of South Windsor concerning Shank Road. I'd like to see maybe if we can get on uh, for one of our agendas to discuss. Um, well, you know, discuss this issue and, and um, and have some planning around it. Right now, I don't know if, if we have any um, concrete plans as a town. And I think we should probably um, talk about it. So, um, just referring to the letter, Marie, that um, that we got an.
I'm aware.
You're aware of it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the letter.
So maybe we can have a right, we got, maybe we got a, a public discussion that are, um, coming up at one of the next meetings. That's it.
Oh.
Okay. Um, I attended Broadbrook Fire Department's meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they, at the time, had seventy-two calls and uh, so far, they're, um, they have a really good problem. They have a ton of new volunteers, which is an issue from the standpoint that gear is really expensive right now and they need a lot of it. So they've decided to, uh, at least in the short term, uh, lease the gear so people can go through firefighter one. Um, so that'll really mitigate that cost in the short term. Uh, their truck is due soon. I forget when exactly, but uh, before Thanksgiving? Something like that.
I heard August.
Oh. My notes are on my desk at home, so we'll refer to that when I.
I heard they were just finishing up the cab.
Yes, it's in the, the cab is.
The cab is.
Um, so maybe I had that wrong, but it's in my notes. Uh, then pension met last night, the uh, you know, of course, the market right now is, is doing well. So at, as of September three, it was just a little over fifteen percent appreciation for this year. But the one trend that I feel like I have to, to, to mention for full disclosure, although we're doing really well in the market every quarter pretty much since two thousand twenty-two, um, we continue to have a trend of where our contributions are less on a quarterly basis than our withdrawals, which is a situation that we've been trying to mitigate with ma, with changing these, the, the pension contracts as they come up to increase the amount of contributions. Cause it's all well and good when the market is good, but it doesn't take too many down quarters before we're in a real problem when we're in a situation like we're in right now. So uh, we are actively looking at that and trying to manage that uh, every time we meet. And when the contracts come up, um, that's one of the major focuses. Um, and then we have wetlands as well. Last night, they had a, working a couple of small uh, violations and then uh, we're meeting, they're meeting next month to uh, here in mitigation for a larger pretty sizable violation on South Main Street. I think that's it. No other real business coming before them that I know of. That's it.
Sarah?
Hey, on October twenty-eighth, I attended the Building Commission meeting. Um, much of the meeting was focused on the community center. Um, construction is still on schedule with a tentative completion date of May sixth. Um, they passed the rock electric, the sheet rock and insulation was going in soon and the roof was to be completed last week. Um, a timeline of the rest of the construction is going to be emailed to the board. Um, the water line should have started as well. And um, the commission appointed Jeff Ostrout as the um, Building Commission member to the School Facility Subcommittee. And they discussed the roof projects, which we voted on tonight. And I think that was the major key points. Um, and everything else has already been mentioned as far as the Veterans Road Race and um, the events that happened in town. So that's all I have.
All right. Uh, this is second public participation, second opportunity for members of the public to address the board of selectmen. There is nobody online, so I'll provide the opportunity to those in the room and then that'll be that. Um, would anybody like to address the members of the board of select? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Allen Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Uh, never heard of mention of the new artwork that's put on the building. Two.
It's up.
It's up.
Oh, it wasn't this afternoon, which is why I didn't mention it.
That's the bottle cap.
Yeah, um, last I saw it was sitting in a corner. No, I didn't realize it was on.
It's on the wall.
Oh, good.
And it looks very good because that's a nice wall for it. So it sits well. It looks good. And everybody now can see it.
Thanks for pointing that out. I'll check that out on the way out.
Fantastic. Uh, also, hey, the lectures, I say here were very smooth. Lot of people helping and a lot in good direction. So came in and you felt like you weren't lost, you weren't confused, you were guided well, and it went very smoothly. So it, that's a good thing. So I have to compliment everybody on that.
Thank you, sir.
I'm done. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Tom Buckley. Curious question. Where's this artwork? On the other side of this wall? Outside on the outside? On the outside. Well, I have to look. I didn't notice it.
I, I came up Ry Street when I came back from Hartford, so I haven't even seen it up yet.
It's on the school.
No, it's on the other side of this wall. It's exterior here.
Oh.
Yep.
I'll walk up there and look at it after.
There's no other public comment. Um, we will move on to executive session. Um, it will, in, there will be two items discussed and it will include Chief Carl and Deputy Chief Murphy. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Move that we go into executive session.
About the one with um, the second one, the landlord? We doing that one?
Oh, it's not about, no, we're doing it, but it's, it's.
Being invited in or no?
No.
Okay.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Looks like.
Uh.
Okay, I did.
Okay.
All right, it is ten oh five. We're out of executive session. Uh, no further business to come before the board of selectmen. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at ten oh five P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at ten oh five.